Welcome to the McDowell County Board of Commissioners's monthly meeting. We're so glad you're in attendance tonight, and we always begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge, so we would like to ask everyone to please stand, and we're going to have Commissioner Chris Allison lead us in our prayer, and Commissioner Lynn Green will then lead us in our pledge to the flag.
Dear God, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We just ask for your guidance and direction as we make decisions on behalf of the citizens of McDowell County. We just ask you to bless everyone here and bless everyone in our county. We just ask for your guidance tonight, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much, may be seated. Okay, Commissioners, at this time, we have the minutes from our previous two meetings. What's the pleasure of the board concerning the minutes as presented?
Will we approve?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor say aye, and opposed, left side. We do have our agenda for tonight's meeting in front of us. Are there any additions or deletions by any Commissioner and/or staff at this time?
Just like to include an employee matter for the closed session, please.
Okay, all right.
Accepted as presented with that change.
Second.
All right, discussion, all in favor say aye, and opposed, left side. Okay, let's move to our first item on our appointment schedule tonight, and we have Mr. William Keller with us, the best director in the United States of America. Sir, come on up to the podium. Is that a good introduction or what? I think they agree with me right there, William. So, William is here to recognize three outstanding individuals. So, Mr. Keller, we'll turn the floor over to you, sir, and good to have you and guest with you tonight.
Appreciate that. Ask Mr. Paramedic Boyd Hoyle and his wife unless they've come up. Appreciate the opportunity to recognize two of our retired full-time paramedics and one of our retired medical directors, but first, we'd like to recognize Mr. Paramedic Boyd Hoyle for his many years of service with McDowell County EMS. He retired from full-time status on July 31st, 2024. He began his career as part-time paramedic with McDowell EMS October 1st, 2015. Prior to being employed with McDowell EMS, Boyd worked for over 33 years at Pisgah Yarn. After the closing of Pisgah Yarn, he found himself out of a job due to the plant closure, but embarked on a new career in healthcare and began attending AB Tech's EMS program. I remember interviewing Boyd when he first came to the agency in 2015, and it was his work ethic and clear dedication, persistence, and just his laser-like focus on making the best out of his new career, and he quickly joined our agency as a full-time paramedic in 2016. You're going to hear me say this a couple times over the course of this evening, but having paramedic Hoyle work at the organization was an EMS director's dream. Never caused us any problems, he was always there for work, he was there for work early, he never called in, he always did his job to the best of his ability, took care of patients like he would take care of his own family, never had one complaint on Boyd. I could go on and on and on. He always answered the phone and came back in when we needed additional coverage. His work ethic is second to none and really has inspired others within our own organization. Everything that he has done for this county is to be commendable or commended, and I just can't speak, speaking to his work ethic doesn't do it justice. I got to witness it firsthand every single day. I want to thank his wife for the support that she provided and Boyd's tenure at McDowell EMS. He's made a lasting impression on our agency and the employees that work there, and that was evident by the comments at his retirement reception. So, please join me on behalf of our entire agency and the citizens of McDowell County. We want to thank you, Boyd, for your service and for your family's support since you joined the agency in 2015. It has definitely been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Boyd, as chairman, I will say, going over the agenda for tonight's meeting the other night, I looked at and I read the information from Mr. Keller that he submitted to the board, and one thing that really stuck out to me was 30 years of manufacturing experience at your age went in, learned a new, something brand-new to you, and I will say I admire you for that. That's a real person that has a desire to help others, I think, who will go in and just learn from scratch what you need to learn to help others, and that really stuck out to me when I was going over the information. I want to say thank you for your service to McDowell County, it's really and truly appreciated, and the board has a resolution in honor of you tonight I would like to read, and then the board will vote on the adoption of this resolution, okay? So, resolution to recognition for paramedic Boyd Hoyle, whereas paramedic Boyd Hoyle began his career at McDowell County EMS as a part-time employee on October 1st, 2015, after serving in manufacturing for 30 years, and whereas paramedic Hoyle enrolled in AB Tech's EMS program, graduating with a paramedic certification, and whereas paramedic Hoyle transferred into full-time status with McDowell County EMS in 2016, and whereas the McDowell County Emergency Services would like to recognize paramedic Boyd Hoyle as a loyal and dedicated employee, serving his community with compassionate medical care with a work ethic that is second to none while being an inspiration within the EMS agency. Now therefore, be it resolved, the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby congratulate paramedic Hoyle on his retirement and do hereby authorize McDowell County EMS to present his duty badge in honor of the faithful service he demonstrated to the citizens of McDowell County. This resolution shall become effective upon adoption. So, what's the pleasure of the board concerning the resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor say aye, and opposed, left side. Adopted this the ninth day of September 2024, and we appreciate your service. Jim, let's come out here, and before though, we move out, I don't give the board time to say anything they want to say.
I'd like to say, I know that Chairman Walker said we've got the best EMS director. Most times, when that's said in a private setting, he's always giving the credit to the employees such as you, and I do trust that very much, so he cannot do it by himself, and your tenure with McDowell County is greatly appreciated.
Boyd, I'd just like to say that, you know, I know there's been lots of people here in the county over your tenure that you have affected and helped in many ways, and I know that they have a deep feeling of gratitude to you for the work that you've done and, you know, for the lives you've saved, and so do we as a board, so thank you very much for your service.
Chris Allison.
Congratulations on your retirement, thank you for your service and dedication to our citizens.
I appreciate your service and your dedication and your support to him. I spent 19 years with the sheriff's office, and I always told the folks on EMS, I wouldn't trade jobs with you for nothing. I am not cut out that way, it takes a special type of person, and I appreciate what you do for us.
Okay, Jim, let's get down here. You couldn't do it without, right? Let's get you nice and this way. One, two, three. Boyd, thanks so much, just get Boyd.
The next employee that we would like to recognize is Captain Marvin Hancock, who is no stranger either to this community. Captain Hancock retired July 31st, 2024, and I'll ask him and his wife Aretha to come Captain Hancock began his career at McDowell EMS as a part-time employee on September 16th, 2001. Thought that was interesting reading that again today, it was five days after 9/11 in 2001, so, signed up for EMS, five days later, and during his time as a part-time paramedic, I'm not sure that there was a weekend that went by during his part-time tenure that he wasn't working, and that's a huge commitment, not only from himself, he was working 40-plus hours a week at Crane Resistiflex as the head electrician, or, did I get that right, head electrician? Don't want to take anything away from you, but also the time that was spent away from family during this time. I was a full-time paramedic on the ambulance, and I don't know there was a holiday that I didn't work, that Marvin Hancock wasn't my partner. We spent many, many holidays together, and we could go on for hours telling some of those stories, but we'll move on. During his time, he rose through the ranks, he became full-time with us October 1st of 2011, he served in numerous officer positions, he served as a Level 1 instructor at McDowell Tech and has been a staple in the paramedic slash EMS program and is responsible for many, many of the people that are working the road this evening and in the coming days. His footprint is in all aspects of emergency services in this county. He has left a lasting impression on countless lives and family members, he's consoled hundreds and hundreds of family members over the course of his career. In the position he retired in as a captain of A-Shift, every 24 hours when he worked, off for 48, working 24, Medic 1, as we know that EMS supervisor, responds to every critical incident in McDowell County during those 24 hours. That includes every pediatric call for service, he would be at the side of that pediatric, he would be at the side of every cardiac arrest patient during that 24 hours, and any other type of serious incident, wilderness response, significant motor vehicle crash, Marvin was there over the course of his career. I can't stand here before you tonight and tell you the effects that this man has had on our organization, has had on me. He is a director's dream, and very seldom do I think people get to experience the employees like we've recognized tonight. Want to thank his family for all the support that they have provided, and most of all, Marvin's going to remain part-time with the agency, not only as a paramedic but also as a part-time officer, so he will carry the rank as captain in the part-time status, and banking on that experience to continue serving the citizens of this county. So with that, I'd like to extend my sincere thanks to what Captain Hancock, known to me as Marvin. I've spent most of my career with him, and unfortunately, I was not able to attend his retirement reception as I was, became sick the day before, but that's one of the things that really bothered me the most is not getting to be there and see him recognized. Words can't speak my gratitude to Marvin for what you've done for me and the agency, but most importantly, the patience that we have served together as a team and an agency over the course of your career, it's much appreciated, sir. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you.
Marvin, it was just a pleasure to go to your retirement ceremony the other day, and one thing that I'm thinking about at that ceremony was the younger paramedics that were in attendance, and when they had opportunity to speak, they stood up and spoke about how you trained them and how you invested time and training and love into their careers, and so that's really hit home to me as a Commissioner thinking, this is the guy that's retiring that is giving all the way out the door, but we're glad you're coming back in the door now, and so we're very proud of you and what you've accomplished, and thank you for caring for the people of McDowell County and meeting their needs in critical situations, and we're grateful for what you've done, and Aretha for standing by Marvin and backing him up and supporting him as you and the rest of them he has done. Thank you so much for what you both have done.
I'd like to say just a quick word about Marvin E. I've known Marvin a long time, and I said this at his retirement, and I'll say it again, Marvin has proven to me as well as many other people in this county, his love for the Lord, and he has never steered from that, his love for God and family, and I have to also think about, you know, we're friends, Marvin and his family and my family have been friends for many years, and occasionally we'll have get-togethers where Marvin is never there. He's always working, so Marvin did love his job, and he done a great job, and I appreciate Marvin, all that you've done for this county and all of what you have done for the citizens of this county, and I appreciate you for being a friend to our family.
I'd just like to say, my father was, and my mother both were in healthcare for many years, and I know that the commitment that's been mentioned, it does draw on the family, but it does take a special person to be able to go out and do that, but the service that you guys do, that the entire department does for this county, and the people that are visiting the county because there's wrecks and all kinds of stuff, it's just, it's very hard to say thank you enough, but with what you have done, with your commitment that you have done affecting your family, it is, it's a true honor to say thank you.
Just congratulations on your retirement, Marvin, and just want to thank you for all your service and dedication to our citizens.
Marvin, I've had many opportunities to see you in action, and you was always top-notch, professional, and I have to go along with what Mr. Brown said, I had the opportunity to, three weeks ago, to sit in a Sunday School class where Marvin was teaching, and it was a blessing to my wife and I, we appreciate that, we appreciate your commitment, your family's commitment to the citizens of this county. It takes a whole lot, it takes a lot of time, and you just got to put your whole heart in it, and you sure have for many years, we appreciate it.
And thank you, Aretha, for standing behind him all these years. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution we have for you, Marvin, from McDowell County, it says, resolution recognizing for Captain Marvin Hancock, whereas Captain Marvin Hancock began his career in McDowell County EMS as a part-time employee on September 16th, 2001, and whereas Captain Hancock worked nearly every weekend until he went full-time in October 1, 2011, and whereas the McDowell County Emergency Services would like to recognize Captain Hancock as an outstanding care provider, instructor, mentor, who has left a lasting impression on McDowell County EMS by saving countless lives, counseling hundreds of families who lost loved ones, and has served the Emergency Medical Service Agency with honor and dignity, and whereas Mr. Hancock plans to continue his service with McDowell County by working part-time with EMS agency. Now therefore, be it resolved, the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby congratulate Captain Marvin Hancock on his retirement, express an appreciation of his desire to work part-time for the McDowell County EMS, and do hereby present his duty badge for his prestigious and steadfast service he demonstrated to the community of McDowell County. This resolution shall become effective upon adoption, adopted this ninth day of September 2024.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, and opposed, left side.
One, two, three.
Now let's get Marvin. Let's get Marvin around the podium.
Not deserving at all, it's been my pleasure, as wish the government were more.
Never done two recognitions in one night on retirement, but definitely have never done three, so, but I appreciate the opportunity to recognize all the folks that we have here tonight. Next, and the last recognition is Dr. William, also known as commonly Bill Fowler, to the community. Dr. Fowler began his career in western North Carolina in July of 1978, he's joined by his wife Michelle here. He completed his residency at Mahak, he joined the medical staff at the McDowell Hospital July of 1981, and he was the EMS medical director from 1985 to 1987, and contributed much to the EMS system here in McDowell County. As it was early on, EMS was developed in 1977, and less than 10 years he was serving as the medical director. Dr. Fowler and his partners really shaped the primary care landscape in McDowell County amongst other physicians here, as they opened McDowell Family Medicine in 1981. The practice is known today as McDowell Medical Associates, and some of his colleagues are here to recognize him as well. I want to extend our sincere appreciation to Dr. Fowler for the support he has given EMS through the years, not only as the EMS medical director, which I was only five years old at the time, but since I became a member of the agency in 1998, you always saw Dr. Fowler reaching out, providing support to EMS, providing those words of encouragement if we came into his office to take a patient to the hospital. He was always a cheerleader for EMS and will always forever be grateful for that, and has continued to be an advocate for emergency medical services here in McDowell County. So we want to take the opportunity to extend our sincere thanks, recognize him for his many years of service as a primary care physician and also as an EMS, retired EMS medical director.
Okay, Dr. Fowler, so congratulations, I want to say this as I was reading your information for the meeting, two things that stuck out to me, it's amazing to have the medical director of our EMS agency for two years, to also have been the chief of staff of our hospital, that's wonderful, I mean, just shows, to me, it shows a quality of leadership that in turn, Dr. Fowler translates into Mr. Keller and all the people under him. So thank you for your outstanding leadership and direction and helping our infant EMS when they were 10 years old, being the director, and I know that's, it can be stressful for you, but we appreciate your willingness to help the people of McDowell County, it's invaluable to have people like you in our community who go above and beyond and go that extra mile to help a fledging agency become one of the best in the nation, and you've got a part in that, I want to say thank you so much, you had a big part in that early on, and this board appreciates that, and we acknowledge what you've done to make this agency what it is today. So thank you so much for all you've done, and we'll start down the board, and I'm sure they want to say something to you, okay? And thank you, Michelle, also.
Dr. Fowler, congratulations on your retirement, and just thank you for your service to the citizens of the community and providing that service to help save lives.
Dr. Fowler, we appreciate your dedication to our county, to the citizens of this county. Dr. Archie McIntosh was my doctor growing up, and I've just got through reading for the second time his book called Little Doc, but in that book, I realized at a young age, he knew what his calling was, so I appreciate you answering that call because you have been one in this county that has had the special touch for people, and we appreciate it so much.
I just want to say, it's an amazing career, not just to the service of your patients, but the support that you've been able to give to so many different associations that you have, one being the EMS, but you have been looked up, your family has been looked up to for many, many years, and I know that with my experience with my father, he had a lot of respect, has had a lot of respect, but the thing about it is, I've told him to retire, Dad, go ahead and leave it alone, he can't do that because of the love that he has, one for the county and two for his patients, so I do want to say congratulations, and really do appreciate all you've given to this county and its people.
Well, I'd like to say congratulations to you, Dr. Fowler, you, I started seeing, coming to your office back years and years ago when it was Dr. Cunningham and you and Dr. Orange, and you guys got me in such good shape, I just was able to quit going to doctors, so, so I'm grateful for that, but we appreciate the service that you have given this community, this county, and we know you are loved by many, and thank you so much.
Dr. Fowler, I'm just going to read the resolution, and I thought it was very fitting to have the son of a doctor read the resolution honoring the doctor tonight, so Patrick, go ahead, start.
All right, resolution of recognition for Dr. William V. Fowler, whereas Dr. Fowler graduated from UNC Chapel Hill Medical School in 1978, and whereas he joined the medical staff at McDowell Hospital in 1981, and whereas Dr. Fowler was establishing partner in forming McDowell Family Medicine in 1981, and was selected, elected president of that organization, now known as McDowell Medical Associates in 1981 through 2009, and whereas Dr. Fowler served as medical director of McDowell County from 1985 through 1987, and whereas Dr. Fowler was awarded chief of staff at McDowell Hospital from 1990 through 1991, and became District 9 Director for the North Carolina Academy of Family Physicians from 1993 through 1995, and whereas Dr. Fowler continued his work at McDowell Medical Associates until retiring on June 28th, 2024, and whereas the McDowell County Emergency Services would like to recognize Dr. Fowler for his leadership, guidance, and unwavering support of McDowell County EMS through the years, which contributed to the overall success of the organization. Now therefore, be it resolved that McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby express their gratitude to Dr. William Fowler for his decades of service to the citizens of McDowell County, for his service to McDowell County EMS, and furthermore, congratulate him on his retirement. This resolution shall become effective upon adoption, adopted this, the ninth day of September 2024.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye, and opposed, left side. Now, before we go down, Dr. Fowler, anything you want to say?
Oh yes, I'm never at a loss for words, that's one thing I can say.
William, side on over, he's going to take the podium.
So people, you know, it's been said that it's always better to keep your mouth shut and thought of it, as rather than open it up and begin to demonstrate at this point, but I would like to thank the fine job that all of you gentlemen do, and again, without each of you to help this county, and you're all contributing in very valuable ways at this point. With EMS, they're second to none, I have personal experience with my family now, and also, again, have professional roles at this point in time. at this point in time. And I would tell you that you're not going to get any better care, better service, or better caring at this point in time. I would also like, I have several pauses here tonight. This is my domestic pause.
Yes, sir, recognize it, Dr. Fowler.
These people helped to correct me when I was not correct, but they also scared me in a positive way also. So I do have, again, a debt of gratitude to all the things that they do to help make that place run and also to try to deliver more than just care, that's the period. So I'll shut up because I think that's wrong.
Yeah, y'all do good. We're coming out there right now, okay, Dr. Fowler?
Step a little bit closer there. Okay, yeah. One, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations, Doctor.
Let's give the doctors a hand. And Mr. Woodton, is there anything you want to add to our county employees and Dr. Fowler?
Again, with the two paramedics and Dr. Fowler and his contribution, I mean, a lot's been said, but just to reiterate that it's an opinion, but we can't test the fact that we think we have the best EMS system in the state, if not southeast, if not the nation. So a lot of that goes to Mr. Keller's leadership, obviously, the folks that he's followed that, you know, did a great job, of course, as well, and the staff he has. And again, I think it was maybe Mr. Ellis said, he's always complimentary of his staff wherever he goes. I won't get into the details, but he sent a note earlier that his staff went above and beyond their call earlier and wanted acknowledgement of that. So the community recognized that. So again, you all do, the community at large recognizes how great they are. So again, from administrative staff, just to reiterate, Mr. Keller does a great, as does his staff here tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's go to item A on our appointment schedule. This is the transit funding and we have Mr. Jason Hallfield, our director, with us tonight. So Mr. Hallfield, come on up, start.
Afternoon. Thank you. It is grant time again, once again. This year, I'll mention, we're not going to have a capital grant. If you remember last year on the capital grant, we replaced two vans. Probably replace two or three next year, but just the way the mileage worked out on the vans, we are not going to have a capital grant this current year. The amount for the administrative grant this year, and this amount comes from the state, The county match for that, of that amount, would be $38,566. Any questions about that?
Sir, are you ready for the hearing?
Yes.
So he's ready for his hearing aspect.
Okay, and that's my declaration, great.
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time, I would declare the board in the public hearing setting to receive comment concerning the transit information that was just given by our director, Jason Hallfield. So we'll start on the right-hand side of the room. If you wish to speak to this, please state your name and we will hear you gladly. All right. Let's go to the left-hand side. Anybody wants to speak, just stand up, state your name and we'll hear you. Okay, there being them, what's the pleasure of the board?
We'll come out public here.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. And you oppose, light side, okay? Now, what's the pleasure of the board concerning the request?
Would we approve this request?
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. All right, motion is carried.
Thank you very much and I'll just give you, gentlemen, just a very quick update on a few things. The end of August, we had already had 21,000 rides for the calendar year, which is more than we had in the entire year of 2021. So we're on track to have another record year. We're up to 600 employment rides per month. That's coming and going morning and afternoon. So the employment is where we see our biggest growth and probably our biggest demand. That continues to grow up, excuse me, the go up on a regular basis. We have a lot of demand for employment rides. Also want to make you aware on the MEE grant that we've been anxiously waiting on for almost two years now. That money's finally out of DC, it's in Raleigh, so we're, you know, sending them the appropriate paperwork and requests as they ask for that. That will be something that we're really looking forward to when that happens. That will be a very visible, very great expansion to the service evenings and weekends. So we're really looking forward to that. Hopefully, and we have no control over that, but hopefully, if all goes as planned, that should be up and running by the first of the year.
Jason, as far as the employment rides, you said 600 per month and that's to their back. Do you turn people away for those employment rides or what's, yes, update on that?
Often, we do have a waiting list because most people have to be at work at seven in the morning, which means the drivers start at six. So we're very limited. I think right now, we're taking four to Baxter and you might say, well, why only four? Because it takes a good bit to pick all those people up and get them up there. Same thing in the evening, I think we take five back from Baxter at the end of first shift. So it takes them about an hour to gather all those people up, if you will, and get them up there on time. So oftentimes, we do have a waiting list for employment simply because we can only do so much with the vans that we have.
Jason, one thing I'd like to ask you to reiterate, now, this is only, this only goes for a certain amount of time. I mean, it's not a permanent fixture for anyone that wants the county to haul them to work. Isn't there a time limit on that where they should be providing their own way of transportation?
Well, unfortunately, with the mandate from the state, there's not. It's just, there's not a time limit. It's if they request a ride, we provide the ride if we have the ability to do so. Under the funding that we get from the state, there's not a time limit on that.
How many requests have you had for, say, second shift?
I would have to get back with you specifically, but off the top of my head, probably 10 to 12 a month. But we can take people to second shift, but we're just not able to take them home. Same thing with third, whenever I take them there, we are able to bring them home in the morning, provided we have the availability to do so.
Okay, any other comments, questions for Mr. Hallfield?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Actually, anything you need to add?
It was a great job, too.
Yes, sir. I do want to brag on the transportation program and the work that you and your employees do, Jason. And you're here again, your work-related rides, that's great. You're getting people to a job so they can earn income, support their families, getting them back home. And hopefully, they'll become self-sufficient and come off the public transportation at some point and buy their own vehicle and better themselves. That's the goal with it. Okay, all right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, it's moved to item C on our appointment schedule. This is a Skyrunner broadband project update. Mr. Woodton, if you would reduce this topic for us.
So Mr. Boyd can come on up, but again, you have been all about broadband expansion in the county when we're able to. And as you know, we've not been able to support that initiative until really the last three years, maybe four, with some of the pandemic-related funding have been made available. But before that, we could only, you know, essentially contact companies like Skyrunner and beg for service expansion. And so now funds are available through grants. We're able to sometimes, you know, act as a conduit and help out. But so Skyrunner, they'll talk about it, but they were a recipient of a complete and access to broadband grant that we worked with the NC Department of Information Technology on. So they were the winner out of that grant and they were very impressive in their application compared to the competition. So wanted to make sure they could come in, talk about their plans related to the grant and maybe outside of the grant, what they had in mind.
Okay, welcome to the boardroom, sir, and we hear you glad.
Thank you for having me this evening, commissioners. I want to update everyone on kind of where we're at in the process and really who we are. Some of you may have relationships with us already, maybe not, but we've been in the community since about 2004, serving wireless internet to residents of McDowell County. We are co-located on a number of towers and we've predominantly, through the years, done a lot of wireless service, fixed wireless service to people's homes. And now that these funding sources have become available, we started cutting our teeth back in, say, about 2014 of doing fiber to the home where funding was available. And so we're a tight-knit group of people, you know, that identified a need in the community to get meaningful broadband to members of our community. And for me, it all started by not being able to get broadband myself. So in this update, I just wanted to share with you guys that we have been selected and our work has been underway to build fiber internet to about 800 locations. The exact number of locations was 795 that are in McDowell County. And this is a competitive process, you know, to get these awards and it's basically, you know, put your best foot forward and tell the county or the state what you can do and then they, you know, make these awards based on number of addresses that you can serve for really the lowest cost. That's kind of the model there. And in our particular case, we'll be leveraging investment that we've made in the past in our wireless infrastructure to quickly deploy this infrastructure. How do I go to the next slide here? So the ultimate goal with this grant and this effort is to get meaningful broadband, in this case, fiber internet, to those that need it most, those that, you know, I like to joke often that if it could exist on its own, it would already be there, meaning that if the revenue could generate the, you know, if the business case could be made, then the infrastructure would have already been built. So these incentives that have been placed in the marketplace by, in this case, the state to offset the cost of the deployment is very meaningful to closing the homework gap and the digital divide that we've all kind of found ourselves in that live in more rural areas. So at the moment, where we're at in the process is doing our applications with the utility owners to place fiber on their utility poles and then also working with right-of-way encroachment and things like that. Most of the engineering for where the lines are going to be placed to serve these addresses is complete. We do all of the engineering in-house, so if there is a challenge, you know, we can overcome it and re-engineer it and redraw those lines essentially in-house and re-engineer the product that the end users will receive. So while much of that foundational work is underway, we expect to start actually installing, you know, fiber cables when our first applications are approved. And then underground areas, like in private communities, like, you know, like the community up around Grants Mountain, we'll get to work on that right away, you know, right away. We've already done a little bit of outreach and working with community leadership there that will kind of help us, you know, start going in and doing that underground construction. And that's an example of where our existing infrastructure is going to be leveraged to move right away because we've already got infrastructure at Grants Mountain. So we'll be able to just kind of do it in reverse from how many providers do, build it from the top down as opposed to bottom of the mountain, essentially. So it sounds like you guys, the board in particular, has a lot of interest in broadband, just seeing that it's an agenda item later to not. And I kind of did a little bit of homework on a little bit of that. And the way that we see it at Skyrunner is we're kind of doing our part to help close that digital divide, like the have and have-nots and help in particular, school-aged children. I'm not from McDowell County, but I am from a western Carolina county of Madison. And in my case, there was an organization called Maine when I was a child that provided us with internet at no charge because I, you know, my family didn't qualify. So I always like to think that the work that I'm doing today enables my future self to gain meaningful access and escape that conundrum that I was, you know, exposed to growing up, just poverty and being able to escape through education was how it worked for me. So closing that homework gap and being able, and COVID really illustrated how important it is that all of these homes have meaningful access to broadband. So we're continuing our work in that regard. And this network will be capable of up to gigabit speeds if they subscribe to that. Our basic plan is 200 megabits on these fiber plans. This is a kind of an overview map of the addresses that are going to be served. In essence, we have about two years to complete this project and that's kind of, you know, beginning to end. Much of the engineering work, like I was saying, is complete and now we're waiting on pole attachments and we'll do underground construction. Really, it'll start in the next three months probably on the first communities for underground construction. So there's a little bit up around, to the south of, the southern tip of Lake James and then there's, you know, corridor here where there's, you know, a little bit of density. So, and I can get a higher detailed copy of this map if you guys would like it. And also these addresses, if you go to the NC one map for broadband, you can see that these were awarded addresses for this cab application and kind of see which ones, you know, have our name associated with them. That would be the ones that are, you know, awarded to Skyrunner will be executed on. And that's kind of where we're at in the process and just wanted to update you guys on that and ask if you had any questions this evening.
I do have a question on the 795 homes. Your peers by the map, the majority of your work here in the county is more in the eastern part of the county. Is there, are there plans to grow in the middle or, you do have a little bit in the west Marion area, but any part in either north or west?
So there's a complicated way that addresses qualify or don't qualify for funding and that process is constantly under challenge, you know, by the state and different stakeholders on what is the correct way to identify if a address is served or not. Our focus here was, when I selected these addresses, were to find somewhat contiguous areas that had addresses that were somewhat contiguous in nature. The short answer is yes. If there are funding sources, there may be another round of cab and depending on, you know, the tier of the county, there's a lot of factors that go into if there will be a second component to cab. I'm not an expert on what the state is going to do. I'm a participant in what they're doing. So I would encourage you to ask the NC DIT if there will be additional rounds for McDowell County. And if there are, we certainly will participate on qualifying addresses. But something that's outside of this, the eastern part and the dots that you see here on this map, is our wireless infrastructure is out there serving, you know, you know, many hundreds, probably about 1,400 citizens of McDowell County with meaningful internet. So if there's an extreme need, we can always look, you know, if there's like a very particular case, like in Buncombe County, we worked with a lot of school-aged homes through their COG, through Landis Sky, and they identified locations and we were able to serve many of those locations through the COVID era, through our wireless infrastructure. But short answer is yes. And then there's another funding source called BEAD. But short answer is yes, and then there's another funding source called BEED. Those rules are still kind of being, you know, muddled through and we'll see where, like for us as an organization, you know, what's our role in that particular funding source? We don't know yet.
Greatly appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Okay, other comments or questions by board members? All right, JJ, thanks so much for being here tonight and the presentation. This has moved to item A under Old Business. This is water project updates. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Lot of updates and I'll try to be quick about it. So if you've been through the Nevo area, really in the past year and a half, you've probably looked up on some construction that's happening. Drove down 126 this weekend and saw a line that was being laid there on Jack Corpening Road by our contractor. So there's, part of phase one is about to wrap up. I think that is maybe the last section they're working on. We have a few easements to work through, but beyond that, we are almost ready to have that entire phase certified. And so once those lines are certified, then folks can apply and tie on. The Hoppy Tom Hollow project is almost about complete. As I've noted before, this one is a competitive grant, is a different funding source, and this project is paying for the plumbing. So the prior one is not, which is unfortunate that we didn't have that set up. This one, it is paying for the plumbing. It was optional. We're not going to force people to connect if they didn't want to. We had about, I think about 18 total that chose to connect at this time and said those services are underway as well. So we've got about maybe three or four weeks left on that project. Phase 2A and 2B, same contractor, they're moving westward towards city limits. Heard from the engineer today, they probably have about three weeks to go before they initiate. The first part of that project will be moving the master meter closer to city limits as I talked about. And then the last two for Nevo, we have the East End Project, which is right in the end game as far as engineering and we're working, county attorney and I, on easement acquisition for that before bids can go out. And then our small project around Exit 90, which is an Appalachian Regional Commission project, that is, design is underway and we have a meeting Friday to talk about approving that design. Then the West Marion Providence, West Marion Elementary area, Providence area, whatever your preference may be, we do have an engineer that you've approved, they have started work on that and the survey is underway. And so the design will take about 11 months. And just as a reminder, we are getting to the school no matter what. That is your direction and the funding participation from the school system certainly guarantees that. Our goal is to then go up Marla Road and then up Zion Hill Road to create a loop, which solves a lot of problems towards if it's looped. And so that entire loop is being designed and permitted. Hopefully, when we go to bid, we'll have enough funding to build that entire loop. But again, if we do not, we'll get to the school and then see what we have after. So I do have a resolution for that project to authorize receipt of the state funding.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose like side. Okay, let's go to item B under building updates.
Thank you. On your memo, as you see there, I have no updates on the DSS building. The General Assembly did meet today. Somewhat surprisingly, there was rumors of a voting session happening in September and the rumors turned out to be true. Most of what they did today were very specific, related to opportunity scholarships, thankfully, community college funding, see Dr. Kelly here, and a few other things related to public school funding and cooperation with ICE by sheriffs. But other than that, there was very little, if any, local funding in that bill. So where we have asked for funding assistance with DSS and a few other things, there is the possibility of a session in November after the election and say, again, there's a possibility still in the short session of that happening. Maybe don't hold your breath is what I said last month. Next item, the transfer station. And sometimes I say transfer station and I might mean the actual sheltered structure at the top of the hill. Sometimes I might mean the entire complex, but I'll talk about the entire complex just for a second. So you authorized probably two months ago, I'm sorry, two years ago actually, two years ago, a master planning process for that site. Our engineer developed a master plan and it's worth the public and of course, you have seen the number, but reminding the public of that number for building a new transfer station building where all the waste is handled and doing some other improvements. It's about a $10 million project. And so that's a very expensive endeavor, of course. And so whenever we have sticker shock hit us like that, we look for funding sources. And we've talked about before, we reached out to our congressman to request federal assistance. There has been some effort made in that. There's funding within funding bills that are making their way through committee, but I have no news for you tonight. So again, we have to wait on that. In the meantime, we have to function. We have to improve what we have. The sheltered facility at the top of the hill, that component, it needs repairs. The state has inspected it and said, you've put it off too long. And so we've talked about this probably a year and a half. We authorized improvement design probably a year and a half ago. They've worked on that ever since. And probably two months ago, we went out to bid on repairs and we had zero bidders. That happens sometimes, but it usually at least have one. So we talked to some of them, some of the requirements for bidding were a little strict because we want a good quality contractor, of course, and so we did lessen some of the requirements that they be essentially experts in solid waste field. So that was removed. And so we're going to, it is being rebid and hopefully we'll have turnout this time.
When will those bids be due?
About three weeks. And so one other thing you have authorized, probably about three months ago, was the installation of a second set of scales. This will help with some of the traffic flow issues that we have on busy days, which is most days. And so those scales have been ordered. Our permit has to be revised for those scales. I don't really understand why, but they do. It does, and so that's in process and it's underway. So what I, that has been talked about, Mr. Brown has brought up once or twice, maybe three times.
Maybe four or five.
Maybe more, a desire to have essentially a second way to get to the top of the hill, up to that transfer station. And so we've finally been able to schedule our engineer to do that inspection and a site visit with us. That's happening Thursday. And again, it probably would be expensive, but we need to find out how much expensive it is and so we're going to do that Thursday.
Can you, speaking about cost to do it, and then road access road, I think it'd be great to have another road up there if it's financially doable, but can you, we've had complaints about.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay, go ahead.
And so what I'm not on your memo, but has been of interest is the road going to the top of the hill. And so there's really two segments of that road. One starts at the bottom gate going to the scales and then from the scales to the top. And if you can imagine, one of the busiest areas, the hardest areas to maintain a road, that's it in this county. There may be a couple more out there, but you've got all kinds of different vehicles going in and out, heavy trucks loaded with waste, and so they're going to beat up whatever is there. And so it doesn't mean you can't fix what you have, but we've tried fixes over time, usually been patches and it's not been sufficient. So I did talk with Mr. Riddle, our director, how would you break this up? Would you do the bottom road and the top road? His recommendation, as the person on the scene, the professional, since we are hoping to have a new transfer station facility built, hopefully within the next five years, if not sooner, in that general vicinity, somewhat up the hill, he would recommend focusing on the lower road right now, which is where a lot of the issues tend to be. And so I talked about material. You know, there's concrete, there's asphalt, we have a little bit of asphalt and a little bit of gravel right now. So his recommendation, receiving the estimate today, is to asphalt it. And so essentially what you would have is the entire road would be dug out and started over with essentially six inches of concrete and then about four inches of asphalt on top. And he said, his opinion, that would last about five years. And five years later, you might have to do some, you know, moderate amount of repair to it, but you're not at the stage that we're at now. This road has probably not been rebuilt in probably 25 years.
I can tell you right now, I won't vote to spend a lot of money on a road that these big trucks are going to be tearing up. Now, if you want to spend money on another separate road for the small vehicles to go up to the top of the hill, you know, like cars and pickups, you know, I'm all in on that. These big trucks, they're, no matter what you put there, they're going to destroy it. And so why waste money on it? Just keep gravel on it and, you know, let them keep trucking.
I think part of it, maybe to the lower road is partially asphalt. It was originally all asphalt at some point, but it's so deteriorated that it's really a safety issue with having patches that have been done and people trying to avoid potholes and things that with two-way traffic, it's probably not the safest situation. Now, the road above the scales, and I hear you have an alternative route for more passenger-type vehicles, that one's, that's a bigger bear to try to figure out as far as how are you going to, because it's curved one and it has a lot of velocity coming down the hill. It'll be harder to pave.
If we're looking at getting engineering to look at the, a full new transfer station, it needs to be closer to the scales and have hardly any road. And then have the upper road to where it's going to be, you're going to be taking metal or wood or whatever.
And that's kind of the concept, is to have the new facility about where the wood waste and the metal pile is. And then the upper is for infrequent.
The engineer visit that's going to happen on Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Are they going to look at just the transfer station or the whole shebang?
Most of, the purpose of the visit is to meet with any contractors that are going to bid on the repair, but the idea is to meet with them to talk about a secondary road and any other thoughts they might have with it.
Just let them come back with the best recommendation they got.
Yeah, my question was going to be, Mr. Riddle, I don't know, his background's probably not paving an asphalt kind of situation.
He's worked in municipals where they pay.
Okay. Well, I would like to have even a further opinion though, other than just his, on what would be the best, six inches concrete may be the way to go with four inches asphalt.
We'll ask the engineer Thursday.
Yeah, I'd like to get some engineering advice on that too, because that's going to be how much money just based.
The asphalt, it's about 80,000.
Just the four inches on top of the concrete.
This would be, again, the lower road, taking out everything that's there, making sure you have a good base of at least six inches of gravel and then the four inches of asphalt on top of it.
So it's 8,000.
So we could talk about that Thursday and bring back any thoughts to you.
Right, sounds good. Mr. Wood, continue on with the recreation part.
Yes, sir. The recreation center project continues, again, on West Court Street there. You can see a little bit from the road, the exit from that site has been cut into that bank and as I note in your memo, there have been discoveries underground of old pipes for all different purposes. And so that happened, of course, there was an old school there and so there's all kinds of things. Probably about four or five more months of good construction, but they're really starting to hit their stride now. And then lastly, really no update on future animal shelter, other than to say the site you have authorized to study on Spouting Road, survey should start any time now.
Comments or questions by board members? There being them, let's move to our next item on our agenda under Old Business. This is item C, broadband update.
Thank you. Speaking of broadband, at the tail end of last month's meeting, you authorized submitting a cab second round grant. And so like I said last month, that was kind of breaking news, hot off the presses. The state is accepting, actually through noon today, it's no longer accepting the applications or letters of interest from counties, but they waived any local match. They were going to handle all the match and so I hope very few counties applied, just to be frank, but we did, got that in about two weeks ago and we'll take whatever they'll give us. So as the phase around one, if there's funding available, we would participate in the submission review process. It'll take probably at least a month to get through all that. Any questions?
Okay, let's go to item D under Old Business. This is the employee leave discussion that we had tabled to get more information. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I lose track on when we first talked about this, but you can never, when you're trying to do good things or talk about good things, you never have too many discussions about it. And so you had asked last month for some more information about parental leave, about a cost. And so when you have a hypothetical, sometimes you have to think hypothetically, but I did have some real numbers for you. In the fiscal year that ended June 30th, we had two mothers that, employees, mothers that took leave. And I'll tell you, just for, keep you up to date, we've had three in this fiscal year. So our numbers have increased already for this fiscal year. Got that a few days ago, but. So what we did is we took a scenario, not making any suggestions, but just a hypothetical, if you had a $40,000 salary, if you did four weeks paid leave, you roughly would have a cost of a little over $3,300. And that is the cost of that time that someone is going to be out. And that scenario is an immediate financial impact theoretically if you have an employee who is working without paid leave. So if they have no sick leave, no vacation, no comp, and they go home on FMLA, they have 12 weeks, I'm not saying that, but if they have no accumulated leave and, you know, they're getting, they're not getting paid to stay home. So you are then saying, all right, under your scenario, we're going to give you your pay for that month, which is, you know, $3,300. The other scenario there, if you have somebody that's been here five, 10 years, they have accumulated leave for many, many weeks and months and they've saved because they're, you know, wanting to have a child perhaps, they're going to get paid their regular salary. And, you know, if you say, we're going to give you paid leave, they don't have to take their accumulated vacation or their sick leave or comp, whatever they've got. So you're inserting this new paid leave in there, what are you doing with the leave they would have taken? Well, they're just, they're banking that for some future, you know, medical situation or vacation they want to take, you know, with their family. Or if they leave in five years and they still have a leave balance, their vacation gets paid out if they go to another. to another government employer, their sick leave balance goes with them if they accept it. And so, there, there's cost. Yes, there's costs in either scenario, but there may be some more immediacy to it if it was an unpaid situation than there would be if there was. The other thing that's not covered in here, the chairman brought up as a, as a valid point earlier, we budget an employee to work 12 months. And so, if they go home, you know, where they have, you know, an FMLA situation and they have no leave to take, that money is just going to sit there and it's not expended. And so, it's not that you're adding a 13th month of pay, you're just putting back in that paid month, or however long you would want to do that. You're putting that paid leave back in there that they otherwise wouldn't have, if that makes sense. So, it can be sort of theoretical when you, when it gets down to it, but it is a cost. It may just be a deferred cost to when, you know, they, they take that sick day or that vacation day that they otherwise wouldn't have had. That's a cost that they, you know, wouldn't have had otherwise.
You have discussed this, had conversations with other counties that have implemented a paid leave like this. What are their, are they able to require, if you have vacation or sick time buildup, are we required to let the employee make the choice? Now, I guess I'm talking to legalities here, or how does that work?
As far as what they take first, or, I, I think from what we can tell with the information we've been able to track down, if you provide a paid whatever leave, maternity leave in this scenario, you're not requiring them to take anything else they've accumulated. So, that just sits over on the shelf. Then when they come back and they have, you know, their baby, maybe in this example, has a medical issue, then that's when they're taking sick leave at that point, once they fully come back after the paid leave.
Actually, what is the standard time period that is recommended, I guess by the federal government, state government, or whomever would be offering guidance on this, for a mother that has a newborn baby to stay at home with that child? What's, what's the standard with pay?
With pay, might be different than what the standard is. The, the standard, I mean, based on FMLA, I mean, just talk about the law for a second, is 12 weeks. And it just, you know, make sure you guys, you gentlemen, know, when we have mothers that are, you know, blessed with that addition of their family, they typically take all 12. And, you know, we wish them well and they get that bonding time, and we adjust around it and make things work. On the paid leave side, what seems to be more common is usually like an eight-week period. There's at least one that's more like a four. So, eight seems to be on, I hate to say an extreme, but maybe extreme, and then four is the minimum.
What does Boca County do? I know you were ever in Boca County.
Let's see. Get back to you on that. I think they're six or eight weeks, maybe even eight.
To piggyback on Mr. Walker's question, if they, if they take this paid leave, are they also allowed to take the FMLA also?
I believe it runs concurrently.
Runs concurrent.
But that would be without pay to the employee under, is that correct?
After the, if you, after the paid, right.
How soon after employment are they qualified to receive this benefit?
For FMLA, it is 12 months. And the, the average for the state, it's 12 months for paid leave that they've implemented for all state employees. And that seems to be what's most common, is you have to work for the employer for 12. And I, my opinion on why that's happening is that employers want to make sure that folks are going to be with you a while, or have been with you a while before you offer something of a benefit of that type, which we do, we're very, when it comes to sick leave and those sorts of things, and health insurance, we were at 90 days. And then when we did some research, most of the counties were doing 30. And so, we, you approved shifting to 30 some months ago, again, to be competitive. But on a paid benefit like this, the 12 seems to be most common.
What's the accrual, what rate of sick time in your first year?
Your...
How many sick days can you have in your, after your first year?
During your first year or after the first year?
During your first year. If your one-year anniversary, what can you be at?
You're accumulating about a day a month at this point.
Is this a benefit that you would only be offering to the mother?
That's something you would have to answer. The state does parental leave, and so that includes adoptions as well.
Boca County, I did take some notes today, earlier when we spoke, I just saw. So, they go four weeks and, and they can split, a husband and wife can split it, the four weeks, two and two. Is that correct? I think that's what you said, stated earlier.
Yeah, they, I'll have to get back to you on the, the amount of the leave, but I do recall that they don't allow both parents in, you know, the same household to both get paid that same amount of time. So, you could choose what or the other.
And it's really, I guess, to me, to me, it would be a benefit, number one, but number two, it had to be a benefit with guidelines.
Restrictions.
And restrictions that Lynn's talked about. And my question, I remember, actually, today was this, what is the time period that is recommended for a mother of a newborn to be able to bond? And that's a question I had, because I think that it's very important to know that information just in general. And then I would, as I would that, I would go along with that.
I would think that happens in the first few hours.
Yeah, I'd say, well, I was thinking 90 days, 60 days. But anyway, also, to me, we have a couple mothers that are out now, three is what you said, actually, on this currently. And...
During this current year?
Current year.
Right.
And so, I, I think that it's not something that's mandatory that we could do, but it's, I think it's something that would be a benefit to a lady who would be interested in having children. And, yeah, I think that we try to make sure we pay our employees the market rate where we can. But to me, it's more of a, I, I, if a mother has a child, I would like to see an incentive to where she wouldn't go, especially with inflation and things like it is now. A mother goes out on FMLA and she gets to be out that time, but she's not receiving pay for that time. I think as a county, as an employer, I would want to see that mother at least have some payment to be able to bond with that child.
I understand, not disagreeing with what you're saying about the bonding, but the private industry that I'm familiar with accrues so much sick time per year. And after a two-year period, the mother could take a five-week period if earning, earning a day a month approximately. So, I mean, it's, it's, it is a cost, it is, it's, it's a personal decision and...
You would think that the, the husband and wife would have talked about this issue before.
Correct. And I, I would be interested in knowing what the other counties surrounding us are and what their policies are. And in other counties, the same, approximate same size, just looking at it, because I do know that this is a, it's a significant benefit. And if...
That's why I was asking my question about the requirements of other counties, you know, do they require them if they have accrued time to take that first?
Right. Well, in private industry, you've got so much sick time and you can let it carry over year to year after a two-year period if it's earning one day a month, it's, you know.
Well, it sounds like we've got...
One hour a month.
It sounds like we've got general consensus, just make a look at something and have, and write, and so we can look at it and just decide at that point. Because we've tabled it what, twice now? And if we're going to do it, we need to have some kind of written policy presented to us to either up or down, either say yes or no, and move on with it.
I'm always for helping our employees where we can, but I, I would like to see the wording of the final policy.
Would be interested too, knowing what the private industry here in the county is, the five largest employers or something like that, what, what is their policy? And then also the county's surrounding and stuff.
Mr. Wood is asking for direction. So, my opinion is, is that we let you come back with a policy that you think is appropriate.
Okay.
And we'll either give you the go-ahead or no next time.
Motion on Florida, second.
Second.
Discussion, all favor say aye. Any opposed, like side. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move to item E, under old business. This is the Charlotte Water IBT Steel from our basin topic. So, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Just a very quick update. You have a really good detailed summary in your packet from Western Piedmont Council of Governments, who is the lead responder on this. You approved last month to provide some funds for this process. And so, that entity, that lobbyist, will work for Western Piedmont and report to them. Mr. Boya and I will essentially serve on that coordinating committee. And our first meeting is in about a month. So, we'll keep you posted next month's meeting.
Okay. Comments, questions by board members? There being then, let's move to item F, under old business. This is our strategic plan update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. I did as directed, of course, and have in your packet just the work plan components that you, you saw last month. I didn't have the, the demographic data and other things that were, at the first part of the plan, Mr. Emery is updating some of that information. But I provided you with some tweaks, just some of the language that was maybe a little bit outdated or unclear. And so, I believe your desire was to review this and then maybe adopt at the October meeting.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? Hold to the plan. Okay, that's what we'll do. Let's move to item A, under new business. This is budget reports. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Just as you see, the property tax collection report from Ms. Any Frey is in here. The sales tax report is also included. And then there is one project budget ordinance for the water project that was discussed earlier, and then one amendment GF1, which is related to sales tax that we will expend and then recollect from the state purchases.
Move that we approve the budget item.
So...
Discussion, all favor say aye. Any opposed, like side. Okay, let's move to item B, under new business. This is the administrative items.
Would you like me to go vote on each one or just...
Well, do them all and then, then we'll just adopt them all. But I think it's good for the public to hear.
Absolutely. So, the first, under our administrative, administrative, our EMS write-offs, and these are again uncollectible EMS bills. We've spent a lot of effort, time and money to try to collect those, but these are ones that are past the period of collection. The next item, under NC DOT requests, you had a request presented to you maybe the month of May from NC DOT on behalf of some property owners along Linville Road north of Lake James. And you directed that staff look into any affected adjacent property owners, whether there was a deeded right of way or otherwise. And so, planning staff helped with this request and maybe even went out there. But anyway, there were no known deeded or implied right-of-ways. Ms. Allison did print out an email that you, that I've received late last week, or it would have been in the packet, from the adjoining property owner. And again, you see in your packet, but they own the property surrounding this road for about a quarter of a mile. And so, they're the ones requesting the abandonment, because essentially, they, they have all control of the property surrounding it. And it benefits them, of course, to have that road there, but it really doesn't benefit the public to have access through the middle of the property. The next item is a proclamation from, for Constitution Week from Dards American Revolution. Our next item is an inspection fee waiver from England Builders on behalf of Dodgersville Fire Department, Sugar Hill Montford Cove Fire Department for fees for new backup generators. And then lastly, is the radio club lease. McDowell Ambusher Radio Club has been in one of our buildings behind what is now Red Cross for many, many decades. And we believe there was some form of agreement with the club, but we can't find it and they can't either. And so, we just want to legalize it essentially and have a lease with them. It's one page. It just says, you're providing a public service in exchange of getting this space for a dollar a year. Any questions about any of the items?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, when we vote, I will vote with the exception of the radio club. I am a member of that organization, so I'm going to not vote on that particular one.
Can we do this real quick? Because if, if, he has to be, I understand, I'd do the same thing. But we've, we've got to go ahead and vote to allow him not to vote separately and independently as much. Is that right? Where's our turn? Make sure we do it right.
I, I don't know that he has to abstain, because typically you have to have a financial interest to abstain, and I don't think he does, being a member of the club.
Okay, we'll move forward then. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve. I already made the motion.
All in favor, all in favor. Any opposed, like side. Okay. All right, let's go to tax matters.
These are our typical discoveries, rebills, refunds, et cetera. You do have some 10-year write-offs on behalf of Ms. Any Frey that she would like to be in that action as well.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
You have a second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, like side. Okay, let's go to item D, under new business. This is board appointments. And Madam Clerk, we'll go to you now on this, so go right ahead.
Thank you. We do have some memos openings for the committee and boards, but we can begin with two applicants for the America 250 Committee. They are Donna Ledbetter and Candace Workman. Ms. Ledbetter would serve as a commissioner appointee, and we added two of those last month, so she would serve as that.
Okay, let's, let's do this at one at a time here on the board. So, what's the pleasure of the board, starting that?
Except Donna Ledbetter.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, like side. Okay.
Okay, and then Ms. Candace Workman would serve as a library appointee on the America 250, and Mr. Brinkley said that she would make a good candidate.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, like side. Okay.
Okay, and then lastly, Amy Davis sent in a application to serve on the Old Fort Library. And Ms. Davis serves on our Trails and Trains Committee.
And did an outstanding job.
Does a really good job.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, like side. Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, let's go to sit and comment on our appointment schedule. Tonight, Mr. Coaster, anybody who has signed up to speak?
I want to sign up.
Okay. All right. Let's go to the added item tonight. This is an employee matter. Commissioner Green requested to have it added, so we're going to close session for employee matters.
Before we do that, can I, as far as commissioner comments, I'd like to ask staff to look at all of our buildings to make sure that they're handicapped accessible, especially where there's payments such as the tax office. And I would like to make a motion to have the tax office lower entry to have a push-button door for handicapped accessibility.
Okay, I have a motion. What's the pleasure of the board, second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, like side. Aye, opposed, like side? Okay? All right.
And if you can get back with us on the other buildings that are not handicapped accessible...
Yes, sir.
...to let us know next month.
Okay. Ashley, just get a report to the board so we can examine that then.
I'll talk with Mr. Suddles, our building inspector extraordinaire.
Okay. All right, we have a closed session now. Declare the board in closed session.
Second.
For any motion, please.
Yeah, you in a motion?
He made a motion, I made a second.
Oh, second, discussion, all favor say aye.
Make a motion, come out of closed session.
Second.
Discussion, all favor say aye. After a closed session, we got a motion adjourned. Second. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, like side?